Rescue, um, uh, offensive attack versus defensive attack and all that kinda stuff, so. Um, live fire burns, we try every opportunity we get because there's no better training than the real deal, you know, you can show them pictures, you can read a book, you can walk them through, tell them, but until you take them and you put them in a room and you light a fire and their eyes get really big and they feel the intense heat, you just don't know what you got yourself into. Um, occasional weekend drills for specialized training, so besides the three drills, we'll host drills, uh, on the weekend and we try to incorporate maybe a barbecue or some food with it, we try to make it interesting, we're taking up their time and family's time, uh, but, uh, they're out there and it makes them safe and we know that they're safe and they're doing their job, so. Any questions about, wait, I'm sorry. Uh, so education and training, uh, budgeted the four thousand dollars, the training ground. So we have a training ground over at the sewer plant right now, we have budgeted twenty-five-hundred dollars, there's changes going on at the sewer plant which, uh, may use that money, um, there's no set exact amount of what it's gonna take, we just need it to perform certain functions for us, that money is available for that. Uh, three thousand five hundred was spent on weekly company drills and out of the firefighter's stipend, they just get a flat fifteen dollars for their four hours of drill, three drills, uh, so that's what, twelve, fifteen dollars for twelve hours of their time, um, and with everybody that attended, it came out to thirty-five hundred dollars for a whole year. Additional funding shall be required to, uh, complete the fire department training facility as part of the wastewater treatment facility at the master plan. Okay, so training, any questions on that?
When's the last time you did a live fire drill?
We had a live fire drill twenty-seventeen at Sixteenth and Mission, that building that sat at the hill at the bottom of the school there, that was a pizza, pizza joint slash massage parlor. It's a barbershop, but yeah, so we trained in there and we were able to burn that down. They're kinda far and few, you have to get a demolition permit and you have to get clearance with APCD, a building has to be inspected, make sure all asbestos is abated, and a lot of safety things have to be checked, so it's kinda rare. We currently have one standing on the terrace, we've done some mitigation to it, we're working through the process right now, um, and when we do get a structure and we're able to do training on it, uh, it does cost money, but if we get everything out of it, we can. We can do search and rescue, we can do ventilation, we can do a whole bunch of drills and repetitive, over and over, and then we can do room and content, and then finally we give them the full-blown, uh, package and light it off and burn it to the ground. So it does a couple things, it gets rid of old abandoned structures or unwanted structures in our community and it gives us a lot of training and, so, the cost is worth it because, like I said, you take somebody, put them in there, light a fire, there you're gonna stay or go. And either grabs them and they wanna stay, or they're like, eh, and they leave, so, that's important.
We also train those jurisdictions, we've been to Templeton on some building fires, training grounds, we do, uh, vehicle fires, we put several vehicles, motorhomes, passenger vehicles, and then we have our Conex boxes where we light live fire, put people into the Conex boxes, do burn over, flash over drills, stuff of that nature, so.
Exactly.
There's more to live fire training than just the, the building component.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's the last time we got a structure to burn down in the community. But as Scott said, there were several opportunities that we've used with the training site to put the fire, you know, in that environment.
Yeah.
Okay, how am I doing on time?
Perfect.
Okay, we're going. All right, administration, pretty much that's it. Okay, there's this, it's Scott and I, chief, assistant chief, fire prevention officer, uh, periodically, and I don't wanna cut off the staff out of this, we get help from, uh, Michelle and tomorrow on a regular basis, um, again, they, they do a lot of paperwork behind the scenes and they send out all the flyers and the bills and things like that, but, uh, as far as the master plan goes, administration needs, we need to maintain a chief, assistant chief in prevention. The reason that prevention is so important is because when we established it, the county came and said, can you provide these services? I said, absolutely, we will, because they said, you can't, we're gonna do it for you, but they're gonna go over and pay a visit to the county office and say, one of my positions costs about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, give it to us, we'll do their prevention for them, and it pays for their position. Well, we're not gonna get them up here doing all the other things that we now have someone being able to do, so, it's very important for us, I love that. So, it's important to keep that position. Um, so, need to develop a part of the master plan, uh, to infill for a duty officer, again, to keep sure that that twenty-four-seven response is available, uh, that means looking at the budget and designating funds that, uh, can secure that. One part of that was looking at how many days it potentially would cover, it's at fifty-two weeks in a year, one day a week, based on the rate, you can set a dollar amount, not that we use all fifty-two days, and every day you don't use just means you're that ahead of your budget, but it's actually pointed out, correct your sink, sir, I'm sorry, that when you do the budget, and we were doing our budget, I'll explain, it's funded at the beginning of the year, not the end, so it's accounted for beforehand, but the, so the funds are available for it, it's just how we use it. When we get to our mid-year budget adjustment, then those things potentially could be changed based on what we haven't used up to that point. Part of the master plan though would be to have it where it supports it and anticipate the call growth and possibly, you know, more of the duty coverage. So, also, we're looking not only today and tomorrow, but on the, on the five-to-ten-year plan, and those call numbers going up, knowing that from May to November or October, our call volumes are way, that's when we run a majority of our calls, so, on the floor firefighters, so, if we can have them here, and we're looking at work project time, and we're looking at duty coverage, and then we look at having coverage available, so those call response times are down during those day hours, um, we look at our master plan and we can forecast based on numbers where the best opportunity to have staffing would be, and then try to create that, based on the funds that are coming in, the growth in our finances, we'll talk about that, we'll tell us how much of that we've been able to implement, how much we can add into that for the master plan. I would anticipate, obviously, in ten years, we hit that threshold and, and we would have an additional person here, probably full-time. I mean, we could use somebody right now, can we get by without him? Yeah, we are, but as we get by, the service and the things we provide start to diminish as, as things go up, so, that's important. As far as fire administration personnel, this could be a part-time person encompassed with maybe a CSD position, but we have a lot of, a lot of administrative, uh, things that we have to do, with all that maintenance, all that call documentation, all that budget, um, tracking, uh, a person to help out, Scott's been logging for the state, our emergency responses, and we're only having three hundred-plus calls, and Michelle and Scott have logged and tracked all of that, and just with our call volume and that workload on top of it, we, we get behind sometimes a month or maybe two at a time, and then that's when it gets difficult. Again, yeah, we can sit down and get caught up, but it starts costing more as you, as you go along. So, any questions about that? Any thoughts, any ideas? Look for ideas as well, this is a, a master plan, so anything you guys think of that I didn't mention could definitely influence some of the things that we're putting up here.
Um, right now, the, the fire prevention officer and the assistant fire chief are considered one position.
Yes.
Do we ever expect in the ten-year, ten years down the road that those may be separate positions? That's under the fire.
Very, very well could be, I think a model would be, um, I don't think that needs to change, I, I think that the, it, it, again, it's like, it's a model.
Right.
And adding the additional personnel that assist with those positions, the, the point is, is the fire prevention position is extremely focused on a discipline that requires specific training, so, all the other eighteen people can't go do that job.
Right.
Pretty much myself and Scott, and I can't go do what he had been sent and trained to do on some accounts, um, I have the overall, like, authority, but I have to get someone that's certified to do some of the things that he does. As far as investigations and all of that, we're both, you know, we can do all that stuff. As far as separating them and less, you know, the chief and assistant chief position, it would have to be pretty far out, because, I, you know, I seen like with past Royal City, uh, you know, they were working at the chief, assistant chief position, um, and they stayed with that model up to a certain point, which was pretty far ahead of where they were at. If the prevention portion of it becomes very active and stuff, uh, I could see where the assistant chief side maybe needs some assistance, I mean, that's where I, me and him handle that responsibility, but as, as far as that goes, assisting him in the prevention side would probably be more appropriate, and the things that don't require certifications. Any other questions? I didn't forget anything? I'm looking, Scott. Oh, it happened again. Forget it, there, guys. Facilities, let's go there, Giv knows that one. All right, current station was built in two thousand, housing for three pieces of response equipment, no separation between the equipment and apparatus floor, office or potential, uh, housing or staffing, uh, quarters, and in the emergency, in, in the fire service, that, you have to have a, to have a separation, looking at this building and to modify it to where it would meet that criteria, it makes far more sense to build a separate apparatus floor and then create this building to meet your needs, uh, for the admin and for the fire station and for the other meeting rooms, things like that, we'll talk about it. Uh, fire department and CSD administration share the same place, it's a very limited space, uh, and we don't have any real confidential meeting areas, uh, the way this building's set up and designed, you, you can hear things, uh, in here, you can be standing outside in, in here and up front, I know they deal with a lot of customer-sensitive information that needs to be secured, and so the design of it wasn't designed for what we're using it for, and so, as we move forward, part of the master plan would be, uh, we're gonna have a design done up that meets all our needs, so we'll have a, a meeting where we sit down and throw everything we can think of, we want and need, and then throw away the, you know, absolute, or have the absolute needs and the wants, the needs and the likes, and do all that stuff, and establish what it is, and then think about the timeframe of a year, five-year, ten-year, uh, stretch. Uh, a meeting room, uh, here has limited space, uh, non-compliant based on occupancy separation, so having the engines here, technically, we shouldn't have a, a meeting place here, right now it's just the board present with employees and a couple community members, but you can see right now, we would run out of space quickly, one of the reasons we don't have the chief meetings here anymore, because they were having twenty-five to thirty people at those meetings, we did have them in here and it got carried away, and instead of being embarrassed or whatever, put them in the app floor with traffic and everything, it's just not the kinda setting that you wanna have your county chiefs meeting in, cause, you know, so, so, we stepped away from it a little bit and, and we'll go back to it when we can accommodate it, and there's plenty of places for us to meet right now, but, and that's a moving target, it's always changing, but all the chiefs like to visit the other stations and the other places to see what's going on as well. Restroom facilities, we have one bathroom that's here for staff and visitors, there is one upstairs, but it's not counted because it's not under any kind of compliance, um, and it's just a, a, a small secondary bathroom, the one down here ADA compliant, and it's only one bathroom, um, and we're getting to the point, again, this building was designed to have volunteer firefighters here on an occasion, and now there's staff on a regular basis and the numbers are up to where, um, it's just not comfortable and feasible the way we're, we're dealing with that. So, there's been, uh, plans to relocate CSD administrative offices to the wastewater treatment facility and a new structure that's in the plans and under, uh, soon to be hopefully constructed, um, there's need for more office space, there's need for confidential meeting space, administrative record keeping in space, so, just for fire, and we're working on addressing the issue with the record keeping space, and right now that's currently also in the computer room, and that room is already tapped out two times over, uh, so these are things we would put in our master plan when we design what we wanna move forward with in the future. Office, uh, equipment room, so, right now, I know the, the gals up front, um, are kinda each under each other's feet, cause they've got printers, they got the, the mail folding machines, they've got all these different things that they have to do and, and they get, uh, on top of each other once in a while, again, it wasn't designed for the purposes being used, so that's something we'd wanna address as we, uh, move forward in our master plan with the development and design of, of what we need for five, ten years out. Continue to have limited bill pay station for the district's utilities, we've talked about that, pay, uh, kiosk, uh, installed somewhere here, um, and we talked about having an area up front where bills could be paid maybe periodically, and we would have to go all the way to the wastewater treatment facility, so, uh, in the plan, we can accommodate that and look at, look at designs that would, um, be positive in that. So, this was just pictures of where we came from, where we're at, again, the old barn, Giv Charles, that's where the old ladder wagon was found, the blue doors across the street, that was an admin office for a while before this building was built, and the old fire station in the forties, uh, was when that was built, uh, and the, the house there was the admin for the fire department, Giv Charles worked for many years, and Ms. Bogman was the secretary for the fire department. So, that's where we came from. This right here, uh, needed facilities, so, we need administrative offices spaced for fire, and in that, we need a chief's office, assistant prevention office, uh, assistant chief, fire prevention, I actually see that as potentially two separate offices, because one, we currently share an office and we have to talk over each other, we interrupt each other's phone calls or meetings, it's, it's pretty awful in, in that regard, plus, uh, we accumulate materials that we need to store to have readily available and, you know, we're sharing, we get along really good so far, and.
So far, so far.
He wants to pee you up today. But, uh.
You want to?
I know. Uh, but fire prevention requires a plans table, plans review, if you bring in contractors and people, you gotta be able to spread the workout, take a look at it, so then, I mean, that, if you're gonna plan something and you're looking ten years down the road and you want that, then that's when you need to plan for it. A, a meeting room, plan and review room, you know, plus, so that's kinda part of that, and then, uh, a duty officer office, somewhere where you come in, right now, we're out here on the ap bay against the wall, but it should be a room where eventually they're assuming the responsibility of the training activity for the drills, and that would be like your captain or duty officer, they would be documenting the call runs and things like that, and then we could be reviewing it, so it would be an office for that. Wait, I'm sorry, let me go back. Okay, so this right here is the plan for our near-future plan. I tried to use a, um, pointer and it, the screen absorbed it, so it didn't work, so I'm gonna use this pointer. This is your fire station, this is Mission Street, this is Eleventh Street, this is the easement behind the station, it runs between the railroad tracks in here, so our, our footprint right here in the building sits on the property line to the back and to the south. We've already secured this land with an agreement for five years, and this is a modular unit that would be placed in there, this would assist in the duty coverage officer position, so that we can have people that don't live locally, that would be here and they're gonna be committed for twenty-four hour time, it will have a sheriff beat station, uh, part of this, and it could have office space, cause it does have a kitchen and a living room space, a bathroom for potential duty officer, again, the sheriff's department, this will be a temporary unit sitting to the south, we look at five years, hopefully no longer than that, this would be just, uh, dirt poured in there like DG leveled off, uh, where it's all surface, um, there's not a public access building, it's, so it doesn't have to meet certain criterias. Now, the reason for this structure is because in here, uh, once we're established over here, then we can start the plans in the dirt parking lot to the north, and that simply would be a structure framed about the same size of this, the, the, the design when we go to do it will meet that need, and then I think I talk about that a little more here in a second. But, the ap bay would be here, it would be our ten-foot separation or like a courtyard designed in here, still have a kiosk station somewhere in the corner here, but then this building can be redesigned for, uh, living quarter, fire station to meet that ten-year need, administrative offices to meet the fire department need, a meeting area for the, for the department, uh, EOC, Emergency Operations Center in the event of a disaster, earthquake, or anything. We've been in contact with Camp Roberts, they're interested in that feature as an off-post meeting point in the event of an emergency as well, the sheriff department, uh, mentioned they were interested as an EOC for disturbance as well, so a meeting room would be established in here and then a sheriff beat station would be in here, this would obviously go away, uh, and the other things we consider depending on the design, this building's four thousand square feet, first floor, um, not a big favor of going second floor, cause it encompasses a bunch of the other, uh, ADA issues and things like that, but we're talking about five to ten years down the road, adding another fifteen-hundred people to the population here, we very well could get an ambulance station to up here and possibly have a, a bedroom slash bathroom kitchenette area that, uh, and a place to park any ambulance, uh, in the new ap bay. So, when all those things are considered in the master plan, that's something that we would look at. Yes?
Are you got, working with the county a little bit on some of this stuff? Cause if we're gonna get all the engines and all the personnel in here and an ambulance also, the county supplies the ambulance, right?
No, no, the county, the ambulance is actually a private owner, Frank Kelton, owns San Diego's ambulance, and they have a contract to provide service, the call volume dictates where he has to have ambulances, so, if our call volume got to a certain point and there were so many calls up here, and it goes beyond the threshold of his time constraints where he has to be at scene by, so he has a number of calls per year, and he has to be on scene within a certain period of time, if he can't meet it, he has to put another ambulance in service. So, by then, potentially, we would.
Yeah, well, I was just thinking, we're expanding District Correction and Indian Valley, these things are all five, ten minutes away from here.
Sure.
And we help.
Well, if we were here.
Valley County also.
Yeah, we're in our district and our district still meets the three to four minute response time, you know, just from in the district.
We won't be able to do that if we get all this building that's going on out here in the vineyards.
Well, if, if it's in the district, we would, the boundaries aren't necessarily changing.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we have the county involved, maybe that helps.
Yeah, oh, okay, cause I see what you mean by that, um, yeah, we're petitioning to the county, cause obviously this is gonna have to be under, some of it's gonna be grant funding, um, and then county, you know, that's one reason why.
What's back here?
The sheriff's, uh, the sheriff's department, you know, they've all said that, yeah, they're very interested in a beat station and they would contribute what they can, new numbers been set, but it's not like they're gonna come up, move in and not pay nothing, they don't have, and the ambulance company would be the same as well, and that's where it might be a benefit to us.
Well, see, Camp Roberts is about half the San Diego's county too, so.
Right?
I don't know where they're gonna house these people at.
Oh, they got it all set up, it's gonna be an East Garrison in Area Seven Thousand.
Throw over there?
The, the.
East Garrison, huh?
The five thousand people coming in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
East Garrison.
They're gonna go up East Garrison, up on top of the hill there, and they're gonna put in a tent city, it's called Kid City, and there's gonna be big tents, permanent tents built in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, hemi tents.
Hemi tents, like you see, uh.
So when you go in East Garrison Gate?
Yeah.
You veer to the left and go up on the plateau?
Yeah.
That whole area of there right now is being prepped for this big tent city.
The old prisons, just.
Well, they can't put a gate around it, cause it's considered a concentration camp, so, whatever they're setting up there is.
Terment.
And terment camp, yeah.
Concentration camp.
Ah, you know.
Terment.
You're, you're, you're confined.
No, 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 video.
I'll just say if it's still, that's what we call it.
That's what we have in the, I tell you, it's during the war.
Sorry, terment, something like that, so.
Semantics.
Semantics, sorry, turning all the J's off.
So, how long do they expect for that camp?
All I know is in the near future, they're showing up, I haven't seen any work, the, the base is actually on, uh, on a lockdown status, per se, restricted access, um, and they're not releasing really much information, but what's been on the news, and what's been on the news was initially fifteen hundred, and as of yesterday, the news released up to five thousand.
But is this, I mean, if they're doing all that work and everything, it must be ongoing for a long time, they expect?
There, I didn't, there wasn't a number mentioned to it, but, you know what? It sort of changed from fifteen to five, and it hasn't even been built yet, so I would imagine that that's not the end of the story, right? Yeah.
Well, they're actually planning on using that tent city at some point in the future for like, uh, US and stuff like that.
Possibly, yeah. So, anyways, these are some of the things, and in the master plan, that's the direction that we're going, and part of it, you know, when Scott submitted, uh, all the stuff through the board on the, uh, temporary housing and that setup, the property with the property owner, the county, the permits, he's already having meetings with them, so they're all on board with this, and once we get past this phase, the next phase will, will be the apparatus, so that this building here, as far as equipment can be vacated, then there'll be a phase of planning the redesign of this structure to meet all those needs. On the timeframe of that, I don't wanna even guess, I like to take each phase, and we're currently involved in phase one with the temporary housing, when that's done, then we'll know when we can start moving forward. And of course, the financing of it and the plans and our budget and how much money we have in our capital and operational reserves and how much can be budgeted in, how much has to be sought from the outside, and, and what kind of building we're looking at, like right now, I don't wanna talk about building to building until a two-by-four is no longer twenty dollars, so, it's, it's a little crazy, but, those are temporary things, and I think we'll find out the best route, uh, when we get to that point.
Are you also planning to have the water tender at that location?
Um, yeah, when we go into the apparatus bay portion of that, uh, design, so, we, we're looking, one, to have a drive-through ap bay rather than a back-in, and then it would have pretty much six stalls, and right now, we currently could fill, uh, four if we put our utility in there, so that kinda leaves two available, uh, but the intent was to have a space for a water tender, and, you know, when you talk about five to ten years out, and you get the call volumes up, we, we may have a reserve engine, we may have another type of piece of equipment that's needed, the spot may sit vacant, and, and we're gonna have some other things involved in there, our ap, our SCBA, I think that slide comes up, but, let's see what happens. Get ahead of myself. Oh, administrative offices again, chief, assistant chief, meeting room, duty office, duty officer and staff quarters, of course, it would need a kitchen, dayroom, sleeping quarters, locker room, bathroom, laundry room, workout area, make them stay fit so they don't get slow, fat, and heavy. Sheriff, uh, beat station would be involved, basically, we're just thinking off the top of our head, the bathroom, office space, lounge place slash, uh, kitchen space, they'd get out of their car, get cool, cool down, use the restroom, be secure, do reports, things like that, it's not a, it's not a, um, substation where they report to work, it's on-duty, stop-in, and the reason for that, it, it basically keeps them in San Miguel, cause right now they use this facility, they have limited access to the school, they use the bathroom at the Caledonia, but this would be somewhere where people would know they're here, they would be out front on Mission Street, high visibility, and they don't have to leave town for their shift, that they would more likely stay up here than, than being out somewhere else. A community meeting room, uh, act as an EOC in the event of a community emergency disaster, or, I'm sorry, community emergency or a disaster, it could be used by other entities for that as well, like the sheriff's department or Camp Roberts, um, things of that nature, available for other community functions and meetings, so it would have a, a lot of things, uh, and the space could possibly be a source of revenue by leasing it out for, you know, meetings and events, uh, maybe we can get the county up here more, we can get other type of meetings like that that focus our community and their eyes a little more instead of being out here and on the edge. Apparatus bay, real quick, separate from the administration, the sleeping quarters, apparatus floor will hold six pieces of equipment, it would also hold the safety gear, cause you don't like that safety gear that you wear to a burning structure inside your sleeping or housing area, there's a defined OES standard that states it has to be kept in a certain location, washed, maintained, and all that, and it collects carcinogens, causes cancer, you just don't wanna be in that stuff in this area. Mechanical room, keep tools and things like that, uh, to work on things, uh, a tool room to store. A tool room to store those tools, same as mechanical room maybe. Air machine, SCBA room, so you make sure you got clean air, it's all stored in one place. Again, mechanical room where you can work on SCBs and do those functions. And the medical response equipment, storage area, cabinets, check our bags, clean them and all that. You don't wanna be bringing a medical bag into your housing, like, we don't bring them in here because we don't want them in here where we sit and eat and all that, because of COVID and all those other things they get exposed to. So, that would be what, that's what an apparatus structure would basically function as and contain. And there would be a bathroom up there. Questions about facilities?
Is there a, a point where you think that that plan with six bays, this building for personnel and administrative offices, et cetera, would not be sufficient? And based on the population, is it possible to have two fire facilities in this community, or with all the?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think that, you know, so we look at five to ten years out, and that's kind of what I'm thinking this master plan. It's hard to forecast further than that based on the economy, the growth, and things like that. Very much so, if they develop the airport, they develop the thirty-eight homes up on the terrace. I'm in the twelve at Mission, plus, I'm sure there's other places over there, because this is just the beginning of a lot of that. Would, and have more people on that side, and I could very easily see possibly a, a, a one apparatus building with a office or something in it that's over there somewhere, if we got volunteers on that side that would respond there before here. Because the call volume, if you cut our district in half right now, over on this side, we, we haven't done it, but we could do a study to see where the calls are at, and when they get to that threshold that would mark putting a piece of equipment over there, we would look for a, a spot like they did the well.
Yeah.
Little postage stamp and put a building on it, back an engine into it, and have the stuff there to take care of that, the safety gear, maybe some BAs, things like that to respond, and be a secondary, definitely. To go bigger than six here, no, I would think you're, I would think if we got, where we ran out of room here, would justify going that next step. And that definitely would be in the master plan as a year-ten consideration.
Right.
Okay, I, I, I think that would be a good thing for our year-ten. I mean, I know that we've also had conversations over the years about the railroad crossing and what on trains are parked in the community by whatever incident happened and a call's happening. Cause what is the current operating procedure if there's, because we're here and there's a, a train track, we only have two crossings in this town. So, what happens on like Mission Meadows and all that stuff?
Drive the pass, huh?
Right.
Well, actually, we could get over if, if, if the one in front of the mission's actually not blocked as well.